...the City Council. I'd now like to ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Crone.
Here.
Matthews.
Here.
Chase.
Brown.
Here.
Naroyan is currently absent. Vice Mayor Watkins.
Here.
And Mayor Tarazas.
Here. All right, thanks for everybody coming back from break. It's our first meeting from break and getting right back into it. We're going to take a pause and turn it over to the city attorney for statement of disqualifications for an announcement to start the meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Tarazas, members of the City Council. There are two items on this evening's agenda, as you know. The first is a resolution to rescind a prior resolution that the council adopted placing a sugar tax measure on the November ballot. Second item concerns the deadline to submit arguments for the rent control just cause eviction measure that is -- has also been ordered on the November ballot by the City Council by resolution. As I've advised the council previously, due to an opinion letter that we received from the FPPC, I'm recommending that council members Matthews and Crone recuse themselves from that matter. There has -- there is also another issue related to this that came to my attention last week concerning the attorney that employs the mayor representing the Santa Cruz Together group in advocating for extending the argument deadline that was specified in the June 26 resolution. I received a letter dated July 31st from Mr. Brad Brereton in which he, first of all, asserted that there is no disqualifying conflict of interest by virtue of his employment relationship with the mayor. And then in particular said that his work on behalf of Santa Two -- Santa Cruz Together is strictly on a pro bono basis. A financial conflict of interest according to the FPPC regulations is -- or rather, the FPPC regulations typically pertain to a financial -- a conflict of interest that arises out of a financial relationship. In this case, given that Mr. Brereton's work on behalf of Santa Cruz Together is on a pro bono basis, there would not be a financial conflict of interest that arises from that. However, the regulations also encourage officials to look carefully and to avoid the appearance of impropriety. And in this case, given that an attorney representing one side in this debate is the employer of a member of the City Council, there is an argument that the appearance of impropriety would create a basis for recusal. And so therefore, it would be advisable to -- for the mayor to likewise recuse himself. So what that means is we have a bare quorum that would be still qualified to participate in this second decision relating to the rent control measure with council members Crone, Matthews, and the Mayor Tarazas recusing themselves.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this?
Can I just, before we get further into that discussion, I would point out that when the issue came to my attention, I sent a letter to the FPPC to ask advice on the question with regard to Mr. Tarazas. And unfortunately, given the short timeline, the FPPC was not able to get back to me on that. So we do have advice from the FPPC that Councilmember Brown does not have a conflict of interest and so may participate in this matter.
Thank you. Okay. At this point then, for item two, Councilmember Crone, Councilmember Matthews, and myself will not be participating, and I'll turn the gavel over to Vice Mayor Watkins. However, we'll move right into the agenda and go into the first item, which is the removal of the sugary sweetened beverage tax measure from the November ballot. And I'll turn it over to the city manager to initiate the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a really brief background here. So on June 26, the City Council adopted a resolution placing a measure on the November ballot to put before the voters a sugar sweetened beverage tax on the November election. A couple of days later, the trailer bill was signed by the governor that essentially injected a poison pill into the ability of cities to be able to enact these kinds of taxes. Basically, with the passage of AB 1838, the path to create a -- adopt a sugar tax in Santa Cruz became more risky because what it does is if the voters were to approve that and we were to move forward with implementing it, and then if it was challenged and determined that it was valid, we would then not be able to have the state franchise tax board collect our sales tax and would require us to do it ourselves, which would be a very complicated and costly and risky thing to do as we receive about $21.8 million in sales tax revenue. So essentially, they really created a mechanism to deter cities from bringing forward these kinds of taxes and adopting these kinds of taxes as a result of this legislation. So given the risks that we face and the circumstances that we face with respect to this item, the recommendation is that you adopt a resolution rescinding the matter. This has to be done by the election, the county elections deadline, which is August 10th, which is why we're here today, to put this before you. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions at this time? Councilmember Crone.
Yes. Martine, I see that it says, "removal of the tax from the fiscal impact area, the 2018 ballot will result in some cost savings proportional share of..." How much is that, that would cost us to place this on the ballot if we were to go ahead and do that?
Trying to recall what that number is. Do you recall, Bonnie, by any chance?
It's $1.50 to $2.50 per voter.
And so you pay it after the election? Thank you.
Okay. At this point, seeing no questions, I'd like to turn it over to public comment. This is item number one for the sugary sweetened beverage tax measure for the November ballot. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion and action.
Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
So I've prepared a couple of comments about this because this is an item I felt really -- feel really passionate about and incredibly disturbed and discouraged by what took place in Sacramento. And then I'm prepared to make a motion. So first of all, I want to really acknowledge the process that took place. I think we had a really thoughtful process amongst the subcommittee as well as amongst the full council, making this even more disturbing because I think we came up with something that was really good for Santa Cruz. The soda industry had done -- their actions were shameful, and they forced the hands of our state legislators and have essentially robbed our city and other cities from the benefits that accompany a sugar sweetened beverage tax. And our local authority has been thwarted, and we are unable now to meet and have the authority to decide how we want to move forward locally for our jurisdiction. And these local sugar tax -- sugar sweetened beverage taxes have been a really effective way and catalyst for several Bay Area communities and provided funding to invest in community well-being, installing hydration stations in schools, investing in community parks and recreation programs. Millions of dollars have been generated and reinvested in the community in ways that have only benefited the Bay Area communities that have them. So given the recent actions that we've seen by the state legislator with their hands being tied and with the exception of Senator -- State Senator Monning, I don't think Santa Cruz can seriously count on Sacramento when it comes to protecting the health of our kids in terms of sugary drinks at this time. And there are current -- there currently are two bills that are moving through the state legislature, SB 1192, which has been introduced by Senator Monning, and that is to make default drinks for kids' meals a healthy one, as well as AB 1335, which would place health warnings on sugary drinks. And I am deeply disturbed, as I'm sure you all are as well, that Big Soda was able to derail Santa Cruz's efforts to improve health of our own residents. And although I am discouraged, I know that we have every intention of working to limit the impact sugary beverages have in our city and support health and well-being through our policy decisions. And one policy option that we have -- that we can make as a local jurisdiction is to make children's meals healthy beverage choices, healthy ones, and creating policies such as SB 1192 that requires a restaurant which serves a meal primarily targeted and marketed to children to make the default drink option served in those bundled meals a healthful beverage, water, sparkling water, flavored water with no added sweeteners, or milk. Consumers can still explicitly ask to replace healthful drinks with a sugar beverage at no cost, but the default beverage offered in a children's meal must be a healthful option. And practicality, if I think about my seven-year-old, if I was to hold up the option of a chocolate milk or a soda or water, nine out of 10 times, I'm assuming she's going to do chocolate milk or soda. So it's just really changing the choices that are before the children. And although this would pale in comparison to the millions that Santa Cruz could receive from a sugar sweetened beverage tax if it were passed, I'd like to propose that the council join other local communities like Long Beach, Stockton, Berkeley, Daly City, Santa Clara County, and the city and county of San Francisco that have with business and community and support enacted city ordinances to make children's beverages healthy choices. So at this point, I'm prepared to make a motion to incorporate that, unless there's other comments that would be made. Sure.
Councilmember Matthews.
I fully support your suggestion that we endorse a state-level measure. I think that's in fact going to reach -- going to have a much broader impact. I just asked the city attorney, this hasn't been advertised as an item for action, so I wonder about introducing it now. I'd certainly be quite happy to co-author something on a future agenda if that's the appropriate way.
That would be an appropriate action to take.
Would it be appropriate to ask staff to research it and return to council for action? Okay.
Sure. I think that's, yeah, that's part of putting it on a future agenda. So with that, I'm happy to second the motion.
Okay.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Watkins, second by Councilmember Matthews. Any further discussion? Councilmember Crone.
Yes. Well, I first want to say I appreciate the time I spent with Councilmember Matthews and Councilmember Watkins on the subcommittee that put this forward to the council, and I really appreciate the unanimous vote as well. I know I was looking at all the various press stuff, you know, The Chronicle called it, you know, blackmail and a shakedown. And I think the voters will not get to vote. I mean, in Sacramento, the city of Sacramento and the city of Santa Cruz both had -- were going to have these on the November ballot. The New York Times, I just want to read just a paragraph from them. "For years, the soda industry has had an ironclad strategy when a city wanted to enact a soda tax: spend a lot of money, rally local businesses, and shoot it down. That strategy worked again and again until it didn't. In 2014, Berkeley, California passed the nation's first tax on sugary drinks, which had been linked to heart disease, obesity, and tooth decay. Since then, eight communities, including three more cities in California, enacted similar bills." I really appreciate our state senator, Bill Monning, for voting no on this shakedown. I appreciate also, there was a few other legislators, I think Scott Weiner voted no from San Francisco as well. But I think it's going to take more. I really think that the folks in Sacramento let us down. They could have rallied together and defeated the initial thing that they were afraid of, the two-thirds tax, and we're all not in favor of that as well because it would limit the ability to raise revenue in the city. My hope is that Senator Monning and others will lead the way and have a state tax on sugar beverage and target it, and that all that money comes directly back to the cities for the kind of programs that we talked about in our subcommittee that relate to health. And I fully want to support sponsoring, you know, not only Bill Monning's current two bills, but also something that has some teeth and will put on the ballot in 2020, a sugar beverage tax that will be statewide and have people rally around that. But thank you for that. And again, I appreciate all of this, but I personally am not going to support this motion because I just don't feel that way, but I think you have the votes, so.
Councilmember Naroyan.
I think this reflects the bigger issues of taxation and the super majorities that are needed to pass measures, whether it's on a local level or a state level. And I hope as more of this happens, it sparks a larger conversation in a larger arena because cities are just struggling to have the funds that they need to provide basic operations and as, you know, in the state. And these really strange propositions that get passed, you know, go along, it makes it so much harder for city leaders to be able to govern their cities and get the revenue they need to properly run them. So, you know, it's part of a much bigger, bigger problem that we have with governance in the state of California.
Councilmember Brown.
I'll, I'd just echo the comments of my colleagues about how unfortunate it is that we've been put in this position facing the potential for a lot of costs for running a ballot initiative that we may not be able to operationalize and facing costly litigation from people in this -- in the state and nationwide, I mean, deep pockets, corporations that would be able to send us into litigation over the matter. And on that, and then following on Councilmember Naroyan's point, I think we all need to remain vigilant about the moves that are being made by corporate interests and others to try to restrict our ability to levy taxes at the local level. So I don't think we've seen the end of efforts to move from a two-third, 50-plus-one majority for general local taxes to two-thirds. So who's to say that someone, some other group won't come back and sponsor this and we'll see it again in future years? So I think we really need to remain engaged on that issue and work with our colleagues in the League of California Cities and CSAC, California State Association of Counties, and others.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. All right. Seeing no further discussion, we'll put this to vote. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Watkins, second by Councilmember Matthews. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Can we get a restatement?
Sure. So I move that we accept the recommendation as presented on the agenda report, as well as ask staff to research and prepare a healthy beverage option for kids' meals and return to council at a future time for consideration.
Did you want to add endorsement of the two pieces of legislation?
And endorsement of the two pieces of legislation being considered at the state right now.
Those will come back to us?
At a future time, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for the restatement. Motion by Vice Mayor Watkins, second by Councilmember Matthews. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, passes with Councilmember Crone voting no, all of the council members voting in favor of the motion. Okay. Next item on the agenda is item number two, consideration of amending the arguments and rebuttals deadlines for the Santa Cruz Rent Control and Tenant Protection Act charter amendment. And I assume there's copies of the agenda in the back in the report, but at this point we should probably take a quick pause and step away. Okay? I'll turn it over to you. You want to move or?
Should I? You're in charge. Go ahead. I'm moving over. Should we consolidate? Can I tell you something really quick? Really loud. I guess we're all consolidating. Okay. Should be interesting. I was doing this, I had the same issue. God, we have hell here to deal with. There you go. We'll come to you. Oh, yeah, you're just comfy over there.
Are we ready? Okay. Well, we convene at this time, and it's my pleasure to serve in this capacity for this moment. We have lost three council members at this time, and so you have now a council of four women. And here we go. So I just want to start by saying, I feel, I know this is a very heated item, and it's a lot of passion in the room. And I have the distinct honor to serve at the local level, knowing that we can behave and act civilly in discourse that we don't necessarily see being displayed at the federal level. So I look forward to having Santa Cruz have a nice thoughtful conversation tonight and to hear from the community members in a respectful and civil way. I want to start by asking that we hear the item and the presentation by staff and then recognize that the mayor had previously acknowledged four groups who will have extended time of four minutes to speak first, and then we'll open it up to public comment. So at this time, I'd like to ask our city staff to present the item.
Thank you, Mayor. So what I'll do is do a brief introduction, then I'll turn it over to our city attorney who will go over the legal issues, and then after that to our city clerk administrator who will talk about process portion of this item. So I'll begin. The item before you, of course, is to consider a resolution amending the deadlines for the arguments and rebuttals for the Santa Cruz Rent Control and Tenant Protection Act. Also, on June 26, the City Council adopted a resolution placing the measure on the November 6 ballot. Within the resolution, the council, it was included the deadlines for the arguments and rebuttals, and those were July 10th and July 20th. Notice of those deadlines was posted on the city's election webpage on June 27th, and the proponents of the measure timely filed arguments in favor of the measure, and no arguments against the measure were received by July 10th. However, within several days after July 10th, city staff learned that there was confusion regarding these deadlines stemming from the fact that there was a discrepancy between the deadlines that were in our resolution versus those dates that are posted on the county's official elections website. And so as a result of that, which, and those deadlines were August 17 and August 24th. So as a result of that, we went and looked at what had happened and what was the cause of that discrepancy. Because by way of background, the city has historically consolidated elections, and deadlines have typically matched for our election. That's a big part of why we consolidate elections. And so it was something that we just really hadn't really come up before. So as we looked into that, what we've learned is that essentially, as a result of, you know, some bad advice from a consultant that we've been working with, as well as just a misread of the code, there was an honest error made in setting those dates. There's sections of the code, and Tony will go over this, that relate to how you can place measures. But the intent was always to consolidate the election and have those dates match, and there wasn't really a deliberate attempt to try to deviate from that. So that's what ended up causing the confusion. So with that, I will turn it over to Tony to talk about the legal issues.
Before you do, Martine, sir, could you please come down in the front because we are, you're blocking the view of those behind you. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Tony.
First of all, the issue that we're confronting has to do with the interpretation of a section of the Elections Code, Section 9286. There are two parts to that section. The first, Part A, states that when the council calls for an election on a ballot measure, that the city elections officials shall set the deadline 14 days from the date that the election is called as the deadline for submitting arguments in favor of and opposed to the measure. Subsection B of that section, however, says that the requirement that the argument deadline be set 14 days from the calling of the election does not apply if the election is consolidated. And just to give you a little bit more background information, when the resolution was prepared by my office in early June, we left the deadline blank, just thinking that the deadline that the county elections official provided would be inserted. Unfortunately, that didn't happen, and I did not review the resolution that went into the packet again, and so I didn't catch the deadline. That was put in the resolution initially. When the issue came to my attention, which happened on July 11th, I looked into the Elections Code provisions, and I interpreted Section 9286 as stating that while the 14-day deadline specified in subsection A isn't required, there's nothing in the statute that prohibits the city from setting the deadline 14 days after the election is called. And therefore, it was my initial opinion that the 14-day deadline was a valid deadline and had to be adhered to. As you are aware, we received a letter on June 30th from an attorney for Santa Cruz Together, Mr. Brereton. And in that letter, he takes the position that, in fact, when a ballot measure is consolidated, the argument deadline must coincide with the deadlines established by the county elections official for county measures, and that therefore, the city's attempt to set a different deadline was legally invalid. In particular, he cites a different section of the Elections Code, Section 10418, which states that if an election is consolidated, the consolidated election shall be held and conducted, election boards appointed, voting precincts designated, candidates nominated, ballots printed, polls opened and closed, voter challenges determined, ballots counted and returned, returns canvassed, results declared, certificates of election issued, recounts conducted. I could go on and on, but to finish, and all other proceedings incidental to and connected with the election shall be regulated and done in accordance with the provisions of law regulating the statewide or special election. In my research, initially, I read that section narrowly as not specifically addressing the question of arguments in favor of and opposed, and so I concluded that that didn't affect the deadlines that were set forth in the city's resolution. Having looked at it more carefully and considered the authorities cited by the Brereton letter, I do think there's a reasonable likelihood that a court would agree that when you have a consolidated election that has a city ballot measure, that the, that all aspects of the election are required to be consolidated, including the argument deadline. And if you accept that as a, as a position, then the July 14th and July 28th deadlines were legally invalid. So there are two issues that are presented for the council here. The first is, again, when I was initially thinking this through, it was my thought that if the council were to decide to extend the argument deadline, given that the way it was established by resolution, then the typical way to modify something that's established by resolution is by adopting a subsequent resolution modifying or rescinding the earlier resolution. If you accept, however, that the first resolution was invalid insofar as it attempted to deviate from the requirements of the Elections Code for consolidated elections, then the council could simply direct staff to accept arguments in accordance with the deadlines established by the county elections official. And that could be done by motion. You wouldn't have to amend the resolution. If you adopt a legally invalid resolution, then it has no effect, and so the council could simply direct staff to accept arguments in accordance with the county's deadline. So it's a confusing topic. I hope that provides some perspective on it, and I'm happy to answer any questions or comments from council members.
Councilmember Brown.
Oh, I actually do have a question related to recusal, and I'm sorry I didn't ask it earlier. But given the amount of communication I've received from members of the community about my standing in voting on this matter, I'd like for you to provide additional information and explanation about my position and if I ought not to recuse myself, given the parameters that you've stated about appearance of impropriety. I just, I just want to clarify this. I hear about it a lot when I'm out in the world. I get emails about it, and I'd like to be responsive.
You know, I think there's a fine line between concluding that an appearance of impropriety justifies someone stepping away from a decision and that, that the law strongly suggests or requires recusal. In your case, I think it's a simpler analysis because you have a letter from the FPPC basically stating that claims that were made about a conflict of interest were not valid. And so I was hoping to get that kind of feedback to educate the decision with regard to, Mayor Tarazas did not do so. So in his case, I think there's more of a basis for erring on the side of caution. And in your case, you have a clear statement from the FPPC that you don't have a conflict of interest. And so I don't think that the same of interest, and so I don't think that the same potential for taint is there.
And one other simple question, hopefully simple. I wasn't able to get this question answered before the meeting, so I apologize. How many votes are needed of the members present to move a particular action?
For, under your council member guidelines, a vote of the majority of the entire council is required to pass a resolution. A simple majority vote, in other words, a majority of the quorum, is required for motions.
That number.
Since there are four council members seated, you need three votes.
Do other council members have questions at this time?
Okay.
Do you need the comments?
City Clerk Administrator?
Yeah, thank you. I thank you for this opportunity. City Manager Burnell and the city attorney gave very specific reasons as to what happened. I will say that it was an error on my part in reading the Elections Code and at the guidance of the consultant, the elections consultant that I was working with. I misread the Elections Code and did not read further. I did not take the extra step in reading further. So that is what happened in terms of why we're here right now. Going forward, I can talk to you about the process in which I will take, so that this doesn't happen again. It will be more transparent. I will be more in communication with both sides. We are not required to publish deadlines in the newspaper, but we will from now on, so this will be going into our process for elections. So going forward, I will be more mindful. There will be more communication. There will be more discussion amongst, with the city attorney or city manager to make sure that doesn't happen again, and I apologize.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much, and I think we all recognize that we're human and we make mistakes, and I appreciate your willingness to set forth ideas to learn from this experience and avoid this type of situation occurring again. And I think, I appreciate that, so thank you. Unless there are any other future comments by the council, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Approximately how many folks plan to speak to this item this evening?
All the organizations first.
I will call the organizations. If you wouldn't mind just leaving your hands up?
About 200.
I think it's 200.
I think like around 30-ish.
40.
40.
One and a half minutes? So we'll have public comment at two minutes with the additional time granted to the organizations that contacted the mayor in advance. And I strongly believe in equity of voice, and I will do my best to move you along if you are going past the four-minute timeframe in a loving and compassionate way, but knowing that I don't want there to be the perception of folks thinking that they're getting special treatment. So I ask that you adhere to the timeframe that you're allotted, and at this time, ask that we have the first person to speak, and that was who, Bonnie? And Pat Colby can come up here and speak for two minutes. Pat Colby, okay.
Is this the speaker I use? Good, I can hear it. Thank you for accommodating my disabilities. There's a lot of questions going around as I listened. Anthony Kadadi, do you think you could have been rescued because it's a conflict of interest? Do you own property? Are you going to make money off of the deadline and this ballot possibly getting off on the measure? Same thing with Rochelle. And I saw some of the nasty things that were sent to Sandy Brown and said about her on Nextdoor. Maybe in all conscience, you should just go ahead and rescue yourself, and then there wouldn't be enough people to vote on it. I mean, the whole thing about the rent control issue comes up because we shouldn't have to have this. We shouldn't have to have government get in the middle of rent. But unfortunately, there's been too many landlords that don't respect tenant rights or civil rights, and that's why it's here. And I, on Nextdoor, what, excuse me?
Again, I want to remind folks to maintain respect and to listen while they have, the folks that are speaking have the mic, and they'll hopefully do the same for you. So if you wouldn't mind keeping your comments to yourself, as the person who is speaking before us has their time before us. Okay, you can go ahead and start it again.
Okay, thank you. Because I initially am very against rent control, because I'm a victim of fraud being done on me, and I had just caused eviction. So these people are all worried about just cause eviction. Well, unfortunately, in this city, and many cities, but this city especially, your size of justice amounts to your pocketbook. My pocketbook is empty, so I've had no justice. I'm holding out for due process because fraud was done on me. So just cause evictions aren't going to protect anyone. Only 3% of people that fight evictions win, and if you can't afford an attorney, the amount of people that win in these eviction courts is about 1%. So there is really nothing that the landlord should have to worry about. But I was hoping that this could be done, this is a classes issue, and I was hoping that tenants and landlords together could come together and, you know, talk about it instead of arguing and siding class. And I'm against the deadline being...
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay, at this time, we would have the four groups that contacted the mayor to come up and speak. You have four minutes. Okay?
You've got to call which organization.
I will, I will call. Thank you very much. I again want to remind folks to maintain respect and civil discourse. If we have to interrupt the meeting, I will have to follow our council policy and rulebook around asking that you be mourned, and if it continues, then we will ask that you leave in disruption of the meeting. So I again want to remind folks that we have an opportunity to hear from everybody, regardless of your agreement with their position in a respectful way, and we will all hear everybody's comments, whether we agree or not, and try our best to be respectful. And I want to hopefully acknowledge that again, and not have to do that multiple times because I know a lot of folks want to speak tonight. So at this point, I would like to ask Lynn Renshaw to come forward, and you will have four minutes to speak on behalf of your organization, Santa Cruz Together. Okay, we have Robert Singleton on behalf. Okay.
Yeah, she's back there if you want to check with her.
Okay, okay. So Robert, you'll have four minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Robert Singleton, and I'm the campaign manager for Santa Cruz Together, the 100% locally funded, locally managed campaign against rent control and just cause eviction measure on the November ballot. Together, we represent thousands of property owners, housing providers, and yes, even tenants like myself, who believe that this measure has qualified for the ballot as both too extreme and costly, and will ultimately harm more renters than it would help. However, that is not why I'm here today. Instead, I'm here on behalf of Santa Cruz Together to urge you to support the staff recommendation to extend the deadline for receiving arguments, both in favor and against this measure, in the interest of fairness and transparency to voters. According to the city staff report before you, a simple clerical error was made in interpreting the proper timeline listed in the state's election code as it pertains to a consolidated versus a special election. This mistake was further compounded in the public sphere due to the differences listed in the county elections guidelines versus those in the city resolution, combined with different interpretations in various local media outlets. With all that being said, it seems clear that when looking at the staff report, that an honest mistake was made and that it needs to be fixed. It's that simple. There's no use overly dwelling on it or blowing it out of proportion. These things happen. We are all human. Had this been any other item, one that didn't have two very organized and focused interest groups on different sides, this sort of mistake might have been met with a shoulder shrug and a cleanup item in a later agenda. Unfortunately, that's not the case, and here we are. If you follow staff's recommendations and extend the deadline, then both groups will have equal space in the voter pamphlet, and both sides will still be able to respond to each other's primary arguments with rebuttal. To interpret this as anything other than fair is reaching, and to construe it as favoritism is an exercise in extraordinary cynicism. Santa Cruz Together wants equal space in the voter guide because of how complex this issue is and how dire the situation is. While rent control may sound favorable on the surface, and while some forms of rent control may actually be effective in addressing outlier rent increases, this measure is poorly written and fraught with unintended consequences that will make the affordable housing shortage worse. Rent increases can be regulated and creating, without creating an entirely separate, independently elected board, one that is funded through additional fees on rental property to the tune of millions of dollars that can be drawn from the city's general fund. Furthermore, the just cause eviction protections, again, while well-intentioned, would open up the door for greater discrimination of those with disabilities, the elderly, and working families, and are already proven to be too risky for many housing providers to want to stay in the rental market. For many property owners, their rental unit may be the single most significant investment of their lives. The threat of having a problem tenant or simply a tenant who needs to be bought out via hefty relocation fees is simply too great a risk to take. This will, and already has, lead to losses of rental units in the face of our already critical affordable housing shortage. But again, regardless of what you think of this measure, it doesn't change the fact that a mistake was made and that it needs to be corrected. Both sides deserve to have an equal opportunity to make their case to voters, so please support the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Got it. Okay, at this point, I'd like to ask Nora Hockman from the Campaign for Rent Control Movement for Housing Justice to come up, and you'll have four minutes as well.
Thank you. I'll probably be sharing this with someone else, so I'll race through my section, and we'll see what happens. And there we go. So, you know, it was interesting to listen about the effect of corporate dollars in this community when it came to the sugary beverage tax, because it is the effect of those corporate dollars that's having an effect when it comes to rent control right now. Because Santa Cruz Together might be a bunch of local landlords, but the California Apartment Association is not local, and neither is the State Board of Realtors, and that's who's bringing in $300,000 to this community. So let me say this about conflicts. It is our understanding that only the mayor can place items on the agenda. The mayor was conflicted out. The mayor put this item on the agenda. It is an item of conflict. We are asking for an immediate response as to whether or not this item itself is a conflict, and once we get that response, we'll continue with our presentation. But if we could have the clock go off while those minds think about it, that'd be great.
We, if you could pause the thing. This is the time we hear from you and don't have questions or dialogue, but we will write down that question and revisit it later when we have an opportunity to hear back from the council. So at this point, the attorney won't be responding to the question at the time, and you can continue with your four minutes for your public comment.
So we're just going to say it is improper that there's a discussion taking place right now about this item because it was improperly placed on this agenda. Before I turn it over to my colleague, let me just say that I went to testify about housing this morning in front of an all-male, all-white Board of Supervisors. This is at least a great respite from that, so we ask you to think very wisely. On June 26th, your council set a date for a ballot statement to be entered. That date was July 10th. The Campaign for Rent Control submitted its statement. The other side didn't, for whatever reason. We were not confused. The clerk was very clear about the date. It troubles us that she is now somehow taking a fall for this. Didn't bother us. We just had to write a statement very quickly and get it turned in. We don't really understand why the other side couldn't do that, given their $400,000 and endless attorneys and consultants, but they didn't get it in. If you issue another date, we will meet this one. They are encouraged to do so because you only get one bite of this apple. Zav?
Greetings, council, everyone here. Thanks for everyone for taking the time today. My name is Zav Hirschfield. I work at the Movement for Housing Justice. I'm a volunteer tenant advocate in the community. So I'm going to rush through this, but I have a question about fairness here. I mean, something that is being raised by the opposition to rent control is that it's not fair for them not to receive their ballot argument. As my colleague said, we met our deadline. They did not. They have plenty of money available to them to reach voters in the city. I'm not sure who's seen the, how do you pronounce it? Skacky? Sketchy? I don't know. Sketchy, oh, thank you. The sketchy mailer that arrived at thousands of voter doors some weeks ago, sent by a CAA-funded front group, I have very little doubt that they're going to be able to reach voters. But I don't want to talk about that for the moment. I want to talk about harm. I want to talk about what it means for the council to offer special benefits to one side in a democratic contest. I spoke with a tenant today who lives in Boulder Creek, who's facing a rent increase that his voucher will not pay for. Without rent control, people in similar situations to him will face houselessness all over the city. I encourage you to consider them and the actual harm it will do to their lives.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, at this point, I'd like to invite up Cynthia Berger for her four minutes. And she, and Cynthia, you're with the Santa Cruz Tenants Association.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Just put my quote here so I can see it. Keeps disappearing. All right. Thank you. I'm Cynthia Berger with Santa Cruz Tenants Association. As a tenant, I live with deadlines. Tenants live with deadlines that have real consequences. Perhaps, you know, if I don't pay my rent, that's immediate grounds for a three-day pay-or-quit notice. The vast majority of tenants hew to this law, and that's why tenants paying rent on time makes the rental market work. That's why we have a rental market, because tenants pay their rent. If that was a big problem, well, we'd have, we wouldn't have a rental market. So perhaps that's why our group paid really close attention to the publicly posted deadline to submit our ballot argument. Nor did we complain that the deadline was too early for us to comply with. This rich opposition closing in on half a million dollars? Apparently, all this money leads to carelessness in following the rules. I would like to leave you with a quote. "The law in its majestic equality forbids the rich as well as the poor to sleep under bridges, to beg in the streets, and to steal bread." Thank you.
Good evening. Hello?
Are you speaking also on behalf of the Santa Cruz Tenants Association? Oh, okay. Did you pause the time?
Hello? Can you hear me?
No.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
You are not going to be able to see me, but you can hear me now. Okay, good evening. It's very little I can add to what Nora and Cynthia say so far. The only comment I want to make to you is that, and I'm making this comment because I know that you, Martine, and you, Cynthia, really care for families, and that's why I'm going to make this comment. One of the landlords who signed the petition when I was asking for signatures, he started arguing with me about that was how unfair was what we were asking for. And my response was that if they had policing themselves, we wouldn't be in the situation we were. We wouldn't be having to talk in favor of people who are living in a very horrible housing situations, or paying 90% of their income into rent. And this is, again, one of those issues where if they had been policing themselves, we wouldn't be here. Tenants actually is working right now with six different tenants, in six different apartment complexes, where the rent has been increased 200, and one of them for $400. With the ordinance in place, this is keep happening because the landlords are failing to be checking themselves and being more human about what is happening right now. Okay? Just as Cynthia say, if I don't pay my rent on time, I don't have a second deadline. I will be receiving a notice that I'm not paying, and from then on. So why they could not comply with what we were able to comply? Are we better? and being more human about what is happening right now. Okay? Just as Cynthia say, if I don't pay my rent on time, I don't have a second deadline. I will be receiving a notice that I'm not paying, and from then on. So why they could not comply with what we were able to comply? Are we better? Are we smarter? Or what is the issue? I believe we are talking about people who are very, you know, intelligent and human. And so why they have to get a special treatment when we did not? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So our next speaker will be from the Students United with Renters. As a representative from that organization, prepared to speak on their behalf. You'll have four minutes.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Brennan, and I am a member of Students United with Renters, a community group that aims to build renter power and raise public awareness about housing inequality and tenants' rights. We are students and non-students, all experiencing in some capacity the injustice of the Santa Cruz rental housing market. And yes, we support rent control. Today, we are demanding that the city council act to protect democracy and the fairness of the election process by not granting a special extended deadline for rent control opponents, and by ensuring that fair political practices commissioned standards are met before making this decision. There have been some astounding examples of inequality in this initiative battle, and they are visible in this sudden proposal to grant a deadline extension. First, it is an unfair advantage for rent control opponents to be able to read our argument and then have weeks to create a supposedly original argument that is in fact a rebuttal. And the effect of this would be to give our opposition two rebuttals to our one. Instead of following the procedure that was contained in the ordinance that this council approved, publicly posted on the city clerk's website, and posted on the city hall bulletin board, opponents are seeking to use their connections with the council to change the rules after the process has already concluded. The mayor's sentinel editorial against rent control, his membership in Santa Cruz Together, and his law firm's hastily-written letter in support of the deadline extension show that even when one is supposed to recuse themselves from such matters, they can still find ways to have what may be an unethical influence on this process. This is why we are demanding an FPPC ruling on whether the mayor acted legally in placing this item on tonight's agenda, as well as a ruling on the fairness of the proposed process. We believe that the best way for the city council to remain neutral as a government body is not to interfere with the process on anyone's behalf. Santa Cruz voters this November will remember your decision as an indication of which council members support truly unbiased elections. Further, campaign finance reports show that rent control opponents will not struggle to get out their message. The Sacramento-based California Apartment Association, the Sacramento-based California Association of Realtors, and the Chicago-based National Association of Realtors, statewide and nationwide organizations, have already raised more than $300,000 to fight this local measure. They have hired multiple consultants, seasoned campaign managers, and advertisers of all kinds, and they will clearly have the resources to bombard Santa Cruz voters with their arguments this fall. You'd think that the least they could do with this kind of financial support is to meet their deadlines. We want this election to be conducted under a transparent, fair, and democratic process. That's only possible when you establish a set of rules to govern everyone, on every side of the campaign, and then stick to them. Democracy means that everyone abides by the same process. And there aren't two sets of rules, one for people who have the ear of the mayor and council, and one for everyone else. In conclusion, we hope that you consider these power imbalances when carrying out your decision. Rent control opponents will have you believing that it is the city's fault for their mistake. We are demanding that you keep the rules the same for everyone and preserve the original deadline. Thank you.
So that is the last of the organizations that reached out to us to ask for extra time. So at this time, we'll move to just general public comment. You'll have two minutes to speak to the council. And if you are interested in speaking, please line up on my left. And... As we transition at this time, we're going to take a two-minute break, because we can't have one person leave during any of it. So, no problem. I might as well go to the... At this time, I'd like to reconvene the meeting. The gavel. All right, we're going to be reconvening the meeting at this time. If I could ask the chambers to please settle down? Thank you. Thank you very much. So we have a lot of folks who are prepared to speak to us. You'll have two minutes to address the council. Every time you clap or interrupt, it just extends that time. So I know there's a lot of folks who have a lot of feelings about the topics and a lot of the points that will be raised. But I ask that you maintain civility and allow the speakers to have their two minutes, and we can move through and hear from everybody at this point. So I appreciate you lining up for public comment. And at this time, I'd like to ask our first speaker to come up, and you'll be given two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to address two points. The upcoming ballot measure for...
You could go ahead and... Sorry to interrupt. You can go ahead and move the... Yes, thank you.
The upcoming ballot measure for rent control is extremely important and will affect the lives of all Santa Cruz residents. Too often, the electorate is making decisions without having full knowledge of what they're voting for. I know for myself, there have been many times going through the voter handbook when I was depending on reading the analysis and the pros and cons to make an educated decision. In view of this, we respectfully and strongly request that the city council either accept the written ballot arguments in opposition to the measure that was submitted on July 17, 2018, or set new deadlines for submission of arguments. The extraordinarily short timetable given, as well as the fact that this date was not discussed in any city council meetings or posted on the city clerk's website, did not provide the opposition proper notice. I can't believe that the people I voted for to become members of the city council would do otherwise. My understanding is that the planning department no longer allows developers to buy their way out of including below-market-rate units. If this is the case, it's a good first step. I've been doing a lot of reading to get the full picture of the housing crisis in Santa Cruz. It's my understanding that it isn't the mom-and-pop landlords that have pushed up the rental costs, but mostly out-of-the-area companies looking to maximize their returns. If the cost of rent is driven in large part... As the cost of rent is driven in large part by the need for student housing, these companies are just taking advantage of the insufficient campus housing. Rather than out-of-the-area companies profiting from this housing crisis, can the city take over the development of affordable housing? I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Tom, and I came here in 1971. I was working in San Francisco in 1969. I had a wife and two children. I couldn't afford to rent anything there. So I lived in a one-room with no plumbing or anything like that, and I commuted back and forth between Merced and San Francisco for about two and a half years. In 1971, I moved to Santa Cruz and found a cheap enough place to rent here. And after a couple of years, I bought a duplex. And we moved into a one-bedroom apartment in that duplex, rented the other one out. And we stayed there for about two years. So then I rented both sides out. And this... I rented them to... Eventually, my last two tenants. One has been there 31 years, and the other one has been there more than 20 years. And they both moved in as a couple with one daughter. And now they're both still couples naturally, and now they have two daughters. The ones in front, living in my apartment, put their two daughters through college, and I'm very proud of that. And the ones in back, their daughters have been raised, and they're doing well, too. The last time I raised their rent was on the one in front, August 1st, 2000... No. 2003. And the one in back was September 1st, 2003. I have not raised the rent in that time, so I'm speaking to the people that are saying that us local landlords are not human. And I'm saying that... Let's proceed straightforward...
Thank you very much.
...to do just on this.
Thank you for your comments.
Greetings, honorable members of the city council and kind and gentle people of the audience. My name is Michael Cox, and I've been reading about this dilemma. It seems to me that the question before the board is a matter of two ethical questions. How to inform the voters, which is first and foremost our job, and then how to make this fair for the organization that is sponsoring the charter amendment, and not give unfair advantage to the organization that is opposing the amendment. So we're kind of caught between two mighty opposites. My hope was that this council could see to accept the arguments that were received, accept the fact that the arguments from the opposition may have been informed by the premature publication of the proponents, and somehow give some kind of compensation, therefore, to the proponents, maybe in the form of an extra rebuttal. But I think it's extremely important in public debate for the voters' sake that both sides make their points, rebut their points, and that information is available for voters to make an informed decision on this very important charter amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ashley Scontriano, and I happen to be a candidate for the council coming up November. I definitely want to support a housing measure that will address everybody's needs. It seems as though we have a measure in front of us that is looking to take from one to help another. And it's the same group that feels as though they've been taken from. And I don't agree that there should be any one side finding themselves at war with one another. The housing solution is complicated. It's complex. And if we look to just absorb a ballot measure that only encompasses helping one entity of our community, we all lose. Therefore, the confusion over the deadline is just that, a clerical error. The rebuttal is implemented into our ballots, and we move forward with our community making a vote that's fair, and hopefully moving forward with looking at solutions that will help the majority as opposed to the minority. Thank you.
Hello, council members, and attorney and manager. My name's F. John LaBarba. My wife, Beth Ann, and I have been residents of Santa Cruz for 45 years. We have a small business we started about 40 years ago, and we've contributed to the community. When we first came to Santa Cruz, we were truly homeless in '73. We're living out of two pickup trucks, one that had a home-built camper shell on. We parked all summer in Felton in a lot next to where the Quick Stop Market is, until we finally found an abandoned cabin up in the mountains through a friend that the Hells Angels had lived in and was abandoned. And we parked there, and we ultimately found the owners that lived in New Mexico. And we started renting, and it took us several months to get the place to where we could live in it. This is 1973. So let's fast forward. Here we are, all these years later. Or I should say, at 75, I graduated UCSC and got off of food stamps and was able to land a job, and I've been working full-time ever since. I'm going to be 65. This section in the housing code, there's a lot of things that really need to see the light of day, and I think that the voters are entitled to that knowledge to make an educated guess during this upcoming election. There's something in there in the just-caused eviction area that talks about you can't evict a tenant if they meet the Uniform Housing Code of California. And yet, that provision allows for three people per bedroom. So essentially, they could sublet... They could be having a small business renting your place, and you'd have no provision for compensation for the wear and tear, the extra parking issues, or anything else that would come up. So I beg you, please, extend this deadline so we can have a fair and equitable...
Thank you for your comments. Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
Hello, council members. My name's Joan Timpany, and I am neither a landlord nor a renter. I'm one of those in-between people who live in my own house, but I have been on both sides of the equation. Throughout college, through different times in my career before I bought a house, I was a renter. And I do understand a lot of the problems there can be with landlords that are in... Not very scrupulous. I've also, in my tenancy as a landlord, had tenants who behaved in a very unfair way. So I think it depends on who the landlord is or who the tenant is, whether or not it's a good thing. I did speak with someone who has been a council member and a mayor in the past. And it was her hope that the council would vote to extend the deadline to conform with the county's published schedule. This has been standard procedure, apparently, in the past. And I believe, or she said she believed, that it would be in the public's best interest to allow it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Orlando Baños. I am neither a renter nor a landlord. I appreciate the opportunity to address you. This is not something that is common in the geographical area that I was born and raised. I have a strong opposition to this ballot measure because I have read it, through it, and understood it. and understood it. I am here to urge you to limit the discussion not to whether to oppose or support this measure. This is not the point of the conversation we're having right now. The point of this conversation is whether or not the process that was followed was appropriate, and whether or not the opponents of the measure deserve an opportunity to present the rebuttal side by side with the supporters of this measure. When I read the wording of the measure, it was extremely difficult for me to understand all of the implications of passing this, and I think it is fair to have both sides present their sides so that people can make an informed decision. So I urge you to please limit the discussion to the issue at hand, which is whether or not the deadline should be extended so that everybody has a fair chance to present in their argument. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My wife and I are longtime owners of two single-family rentals on the lower west side of the city. We care a lot about these properties and have invested significantly in maintaining and improving them over the years. We've rented to a variety of students, families, and working adults. We always use simple month-to-month leases, which typically stay in effect until a tenant leaves. Mostly, we've had good tenants and few issues, but a couple of times, we've had to ask tenants to leave for the good of the property and the neighborhood. We typically rent a bit below the average local rate for comparables and are often told by applicants that our properties are the cream of the crop. If the rent control measure passes and applies to our properties, it will strongly affect us and the two rentals. We will most likely quickly evict our good tenants and sell the houses to new owners who will buy them as primary or secondary residences. We have no desire to sell these valuable properties and evict great tenants, so why would we do that? We've lived in rent-controlled cities where property upkeep doesn't make financial sense, problem tenants create giant headaches, and the rent control bureaucracy controls your rental. Why would we subject ourselves to that when we could either buy rentals outside the city or just invest the proceeds of the sale? It's not the price caps that are the issue.
Excuse me, you can pause the time. Go ahead.
Coram, please.
Yes, that's right.
It's the eviction process, subleasing, relocation fees, and board rules in this specific measure that aren't worth the aggravation. What is the council's role as regards this measure? Since we are clearly not the exceptional case, my wife and I, the passage of this extreme and onerous measure will cause significant loss of rental properties in the city and hardship for many current renters, the council should be concerned with the protection of current renters and landlords.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next speaker, please.
Hello, council. My name is William Robb. I represent the Walt Eller Company in town here. And I think I feel, or may be able to speak for most people here, that whether or not you agree with the initiative or don't, people have a right to know both sides, and they should get both sides when they are trying to figure out a very, very important idea and prospect for the city of Santa Cruz. And so, if, for whatever reason, if they are not allowed one side's information and the other side's information to make an honest decision, I just don't see how they can make an honest decision. And also, if the tide were turned in any way, I think most people would agree, let's the other side have their say, and let's let them have their say regardless if they were at fault. To make a good, honest decision, we need both sides. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next speaker, please.
Hello, council. My name is Julian Pirino Stoll. I am the co-chair of the Democratic Socialists of America, Santa Cruz, and I'm here to support democracy in our city government. I'm here to support fairness and transparency and accountability in this city government, and that means today I am speaking in opposition to extending the deadline. It has been said that fighting for housing justice in this city is like David and Goliath. Goliath because our opponents have nearly $400,000 to defeat us, a great deal of which is coming from outside sources like the California Apartment Association, not based in Santa Cruz. Goliath because several council members have already declared themselves supporters of our opposition, including Mayor Torazas. Goliath because an attorney at the same law office where the mayor works submitted a letter to the city attorney requesting an extension. Goliath because the mayor placed this item on the agenda. Goliath because many of the same supporters of our opposition are supporters of the same council members who are taking this vote. It is clear that despite the immense resources at their disposal, our opposition did not submit their argument on time. Now they are requesting not only to have their late argument on the ballot, but to do so having already seen our argument. They are not asking for fairness in this election, they're asking for an advantage. Extending this deadline is not democracy, it reeks of partiality. It reeks of conflict of interest. It reeks of united affluent interests pulling out all the stops to beat a local grassroots campaign. Don't do it.
All right, next speaker, please.
My name's David Steinberg, and I'm a bioinformatics programmer at the university. And although I make tools to help scientists understand the origins of life and the mechanisms of cancer, as a father of two, I can barely afford to continue my work here due to rising housing costs. Though rent control seems like a way of helping us continue building a community here, tonight I want to tell you a story about ballots, case precedent, and impartiality. In 2012, a tax measure was proposed in Sacramento. Arguments for the measure were written by city council members while the counterarguments were to be provided by the mayor, Kevin Johnson, at his own request. The arguments in favor of Measure U were turned in by the deadline. However, according to Steve McViglio, Johnson's 2012 campaign manager, an opposing ballot argument was submitted by the mayor's office, but it was late because of confusion over deadlines, a clerical error. Due to state law, this would require Measure U to be entered without counterarguments. A group called Ion Sacramento filed suit in order to force the city to include its counterarguments by filing a writ of mandate. They argued, if this city's official decision blocking access to the ballot is allowed to stand, Sacramento voters will be unjustly cheated out of their basic democratic right to weigh both the pro and con arguments on the city's own proposal to raise sales taxes. The city official in question was city clerk Shirley Concolino. Ion Sacramento wanted to compel her to extend the deadline through their filings. Upon reviewing the case, Sacramento County Superior Court Judge Michael Kenny said, "It is a prerequisite of a writ of mandate that is a violation of duty by the city clerk. I see none of that here." Concolino was not compelled to extend the deadline. In an emailed statement, she said, "It is my duty to ensure fair, impartial, and neutral election process. The neutral process includes the deadlines. If I were to arbitrarily change or modify a deadline, I would be negating this neutral process and would in fact be giving preference to one side or the other." Unless there's reason to believe the city clerk has violated their duty in some way, the matter before the city council will quickly-
Thank you very much.
...quick arrest following case precedent.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, David Plumlee, and to me, this seems fairly straightforward. Your attorney and your city manager have both said, "This needs to be done. You need to extend." I think it's imperative that the electorate has both sides of the story when they go to the voting booth. As a gentleman said earlier, oftentimes, I will read those before I vote to make sure that what I am thinking is in line with what the arguments are, and I will decide based sometimes on those arguments. I'm urging you to please extend this and make sure that the electorate has everything they need to make a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Dave Willis. I'm hungry. It's like, if I have an interest in something, then I'm going to research it. I'm going to look it up. You know, I'm not all that computer literate, but I get on the computer and I want to plan a trip, and then the computer frustrates me out, but I don't give up. I keep going. So I figure these people, they should be smart, they got business, they don't have the time to look it up. That's not on us. We ain't got nothing to do. They saying this will benefit them, and we not standing in their way. They've had money this whole time. What have they illustrated? We poor, look. We ain't got nothing to do with that. The issue is, there was time to do something, we, our side, did it. Their side didn't. I guess they was overlooking us, saying, "Oh, they ain't going to do it." Well, that's on them. What was done was done. There was a, the information was out there. You have this much time to do something. The time was there, they didn't do it. It's done. We spoken. You heard a perfect example tonight. Dude say, "Well, we just going to evict the people and sell the property." That's what be going on. That's why we need these protections. It's real. "Oh, well, they saying this and that." Well, we already suffering. What was done was done. They had a time limit. We had a time limit. We did what we did, and we didn't stand in front of them blocking the way. What was done, it's law, it's legal, should be over. That's it. You give them a chance, "Oh, you know, you're preferential." We're all the same. Only some suffer, and some is wealthy, they've been rich. It's our turn, it's just time to be protected. It's reasonable. What's done is done. They had a time limit, we met our burden, we had a time limit, the same limit. It was done. It's done. It's over. And thanks for your service and everything.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council, city attorney, city manager. My name is Tom Donahue. I am a resident and renter of Santa Cruz and business owner, and I urge the city council to vote against this measure because moving the deadline, number one, is unethical to extend a deadline after it has already passed; number two, because it would give an extremely unfair, disproportionate, and undemocratic advantage to the opponents of rent control by allowing them to write their argument after having viewed ours, which is essentially toothpaste that cannot be put back into the tube; and number three, because Santa Cruz Together is attempting to use undue financial and political influence over our city's institutions to sway the council into giving them this undue advantage to the injury of the established democratic process. As noted by Attorney Condotti, the city has the power to set the necessary deadlines and requirements for a citywide ballot initiative, and as long as these requirements and deadlines are within compliance with the law. And California election law only requires that ballot arguments be submitted in time to meet the state deadlines, and it does not prohibit local jurisdictions from setting earlier deadlines for local measures or candidates. The city clerk may have misread the law in regard to setting the deadline, but no laws were violated in the process, and it was within the power of the city to set the deadline that they did, which the city council approved. This deadline was fully in compliance with California election law, and the claims made by Santa Cruz Together that the city clerk or the city council somehow violated the law by setting this deadline ring as hollow as their claims of ever in control itself. We would not have any issue with the opposition having their argument on the ballot if they had followed the established legal process, but not by allowing them to skirt that process. The 63% of residents of the city of Santa Cruz who rent their homes, who will be voting this November, are counting on the city council to stand up for them and not give special anti-democratic favors to wealthy and powerful interests bolstered by massive infusions of cash from outside of our city and our state, which would continue to drive our rent prices higher and higher.
Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Good evening, city councilwoman. My name is Kieran Colby, and I live in Lower Ocean. You know, we've been hearing a lot tonight about how Santa Cruz Together and the opponents of rent control believe that this is just what's fair, an extension, a special accommodation is what's fair. But I don't see what's fair about $400,000 in special interest money from Sacramento-based lobbying groups coming into our community and tipping the scales against the ordinary working people who live in this city. I have in my hand a copy of the notice, which I've highlighted conveniently, that shows when the original deadline was stated and was placed online. I may not have $400,000, but I do have Google, and I was able to look up the deadline, and if I can do it, I would surely hope that our opponents can do it as well. I work for the Service Employees International Union, who represent many different nurses, healthcare workers, and city civil servants who every day work as hard as they can to make this the best city possible, and more than 90% of them cannot afford to live in this city. And that, to me, is outrageous, and something has to be done about that, and that is what the proponents of rent control are trying to do, and that is what frankly I see the opponents of rent control ignoring each and every single day. But the problem is that the working people who make this city run don't have hundreds of thousands of dollars in lobbying money from Sacramento. So I urge you to not tip the scales further in their favor. So I urge you to vote no on special accommodations for the opponents of rent control tonight. Thank you.
My name is Deborah Wallace, and I thank the city staff for acknowledging an inadvertent error in setting the voter handbook material deadlines. Mistakes are understandable, and they're normal. Since the rent control measure is part of the consolidated November election, there is no reason to deviate from the normal election calendar. Clearly, 9286B of California law was applicable, and it is sensible to adhere to it. Full transparency and a fair democratic process should be followed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next speaker, please.
My name is Susan Eberine. I'm a generational, long generation here in Santa Cruz. I'm here to hope that you allow the other side to have their argument on the ballot. It would be very unfair not to. I think it would, you've had three people up here admit mistakes, three of your officers admit that they made errors. Why should our side take the fall for that? I have very little faith that you will do the right thing. I think that the other side has had tremendous help, and I will sell my rentals and evict my tenants. I will have nothing to do with Santa Cruz if this goes through. I've seen nothing but corruption from the city council, and I hope you'll do the right thing tonight.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening, council members. My name is Josie Buchanan. I'm a recent graduate of UC Santa Cruz, and I have, against many odds, continued to live in and rent in Santa Cruz. In the year since I have graduated, I've seen many close friends forced to leave this community, often taking valuable skills and ambition with them because they can no longer afford to live here. I have, for the past 10 months, worked tirelessly to better this community that I love, working above all to create more housing. I love Santa Cruz because it has always been a place that I believe was inclusive, transparent, and always opened a meaningful change. These are values that I believe are not reflected in this measure. I am against the rent control and just-cause eviction measure because I believe it to be an extreme measure that will, intentionally or not, freeze Santa Cruz and cut it off from young people, families, and workers. Though I believe in the good intentions of the people supporting this measure, I do not believe it is the way to achieve these aims. The Santa Cruz housing crisis is too complex and deeply rooted an issue to be brushed aside with blame on greedy landlords. The individuals I have spoken to in the past month are real people who worry for their futures, their families' futures, and the future of this community at large. They are not money-hungry developers. I believe this measure will detrimentally harm the future of Santa Cruz and undo the work of many amazing individuals that work tirelessly every day to make Santa Cruz better. Democracy is not found in the following of a timeline. True democracy is letting the people know both sides of an issue and letting them decide for themselves. It is for these reasons that I urge you to allow the voters to fully educate themselves on this bill by granting Santa Cruz Together's appeal to place their argument on the voter handbook for the November election. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, go ahead, sir.
Hello. My name's Jeff Veece, and I've been a Santa Cruz resident for 30 years and a landlord for 30 years. And I believe that this rent control measure, because it's so important to the city, and I really believe that the city council has a responsibility to the citizens of Santa Cruz to be unbiased and to actually let the voters see both sides of the issue. And I specifically am talking about the voters' pamphlet. That is critical, that have both sides of the issue so that the voters, I think people are missing this, they're missing that the voters are the ones that have to decide. Let the voters see the issues. And I just think that's very, very important. And I believe also that this measure should follow the consolidated election calendar. And I'd like to say one more thing, if I have a little time. We've heard a lot of comments, or some comments, about very greedy landlords. The mom- The mom-and-pop landlords that I know, and I've been here for 30 years, are not greedy. And they have very reasonable rents. I can give you an example for myself. Is I had one of my rental properties appraised, and because of the levels of the rents I'm charging, it's a triplex. The property value was worth 30% less than if I would have been charged in market rents. And that's part of the impact when you hear owners talk about they're going to sell, and we hear boos and stuff. If this measure passes, it puts owners in a very tough spot, especially like me, right? I lose 30% of my equity in an apartment, which is basically almost all the equity I have. What options do I have? The options I have, I could sell it. I can convert it to something that, like condos or something, which I may do. But I don't want to do that. For 30 years, I've had these properties. I love Santa Cruz, and I love renters, but it's forcing our hand.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Councilmembers. My name is Faz. I think I may not know you all that well, but I know you all enough to know that none of you are in favor of the 45th administration. We see day in and day out the 45th administration continuously rigging our elections, our government in favor of the wealthy. We witness that every day on a national level. And to allow an extension of a deadline is very reminiscent of allowing wealthy interests to get away with continuing to rig our election in favor of the 1%. I wanted to just also say, in terms of reaching out to voters, the opposition has made a very good point about reaching out to voters, and that's why they will have no problem reaching out to all 30,000, 40,000 voters with the $300,000 that they have raised from big wealthy interests outside of our county. I have no concern that they will have a problem doing that. And Vice Mayor Watkins, I appreciate you mentioning the issue of equity in today's discussion. I think that extending this deadline is not equity. I believe it is favoring one side over the other, and that's why we need to stick with the deadlines that were established, and to change them is undemocratic and it is unfair. So please keep the rules. Please keep the election integrity the way it is, and do not vote to extend the deadline. Thank you.
Thank you, City Council. My name's Aktesari. My wife and I have a house that we bought recently on the Upper West Side of Santa Cruz. And she... It was not... It wasn't cheap. In this market, really, nothing is very cheap. But she works around the clock, pretty much around the clock. I'm more or less a stay-at-home dad. But so we're deciding... We decided to rent it, and it was going to just maybe one- or two-year lease. And so we're renting it now to some UCSE students. They've been amazing tenants. And we plan to move into the house eventually when my daughter starts kindergarten at Westlake, because it's in the Westlake School District. It's kind of important to us to end up in that neighborhood, because I went to school there when I was a kid. So anyway, we were just concerned that we're going to be... We won't be able to actually move into our rental because we are possibly going to have to pay relocation fees to the students for six months. And the thing that's crazy is that they actually... Their parents are cosigners on their lease. So they actually... Their combined income annually exceeds ours by about five times. So it just seemed... Would seem a little ridiculous for us, a small family, to be having to pay for the students to relocate when their parents are making far more money than we do. So I'm pretty much up here just asking for you to accept, yeah, Santa Cruz Together's voter handbook arguments, or change the consolidated schedule.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be... Okay? Our next speaker will be given four minutes for translation time. Interpretation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Ramon Santos, y tengo 28 años trabajando, viviendo en unos apartamentos. 20 años que... Ay, mama!
Good afternoon. My name is Ramon Santos, and I've been working in some apartments for 28 years.
En el primer dueño, durante 20 años, no nos aumentó más de que 350 dólares.
The first owner didn't raise our rents more than $350 in the first 20 years.
Y en ocho años que tenemos con las nuevas personas, ya nos han aumentado mil dólares, 150 cada año.
The current owner, in the last eight years, has raised the rent...
Cuántos? 150.
A hundred and fifty dollars...
Por cada año.
Each month, every year? Every year.
El problema es que en mi casa tiene 25 años la misma alfombra. No cambian nada.
But we have the same carpet. It hasn't changed at all.
Él quiere que paguemos nosotros todo lo de la casa. Quiere que nosotros paguemos aparte la alfombra. Me hizo comprar estufa, y no quieren arreglar nada.
They also want us to pay everything. They want us to change the carpet. They want us to pay for the stove.
Tengo videos de que una vez que llovió, andábamos de vacaciones, y el agua cayó en mi cama. Tuve que tirar todo cuando llegué porque estaba todo mojado.
I have video documentation. One time, we were on vacation, and it rained, and the water came in, and it was on our bed.
Ellos nada más le taparon arriba, le echaron lo que debe de llevar arriba, pero mi cuarto todavía tiene el portillo.
They just patched up above, just the very part that was on the outside, but not on the inside.
Nos amenaza, nos manda cartas amenazándonos. Si no quitamos todo lo que tenemos por fuera de la casa, en los praditos de afuera, a mí me hizo tirar tres camionetadas de cosas que tenía.
They send us threatening letters about the stuff that we have outside. They made me throw out three truckloads of stuff.
Vivo con dos hijas, y tuve que sacar a una de la escuela porque no puedo... No me ajusta para la renta. Entonces, de mis dos hijas, tuve que sacar una para que me ayudara con los gastos de la casa.
I have three daughters, and I had to take one out of school so that she could help me with the costs of rent.
No nos deja tener por fuera, no nos deja tener ni un galón de agua. El otro día se enojó porque me halló que tenía una silla, y estaba lavando yo algo para hacer de comer, y nos amenaza, siempre nos amenaza con correr del apartamento.
They don't even let us have a gallon of water outside. They're always threatening to kick us out. No capte qué otra cosa.
Nos amenazan, quiere que dejemos el apartamento.
Ah, esa parte sí, dije.
Y no... Siempre unas personas que vivían ahí, se salieron por lo mismo. Ahorita ese apartamento lo renta por 2,500, siendo que él tenía que pintarlo y cambiarle la carpeta.
Other people have already left. The rent, which is $1,500...
2,500.
2,500, even though that they had to pay everything themselves.
Gracias.
Gracias. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me to speak. The discussion right now is only about one thing, and that is the rule of law. I believe in the rule of law. I think that's what governs us and what keeps us away from anarchy. I'm going to use a simple example, a stop sign. I don't like the stop sign. I don't want to stop. I hate that I have to stop. It really aggravates me. I'm going to run the stop sign, period. Even though there is a law that's written down, a citation, if you will, that says, "You're going to get a ticket, and if you do it very often, you're going to go to jail." Well, I don't know how strong it is when the Elections Code says something, the State of California's Elections Code, and that statement is 9286A and B. The only difference with B is that it says that a certain different amount of time has to be given because it's a consolidated election. And we have to follow those rules, or we will have anarchy. It is not because of fairness. It is not because somebody is getting a better treatment. It's because that law was written for a reason. And every section of this thing, I'm thinking about the guy or gal who wrote it, they must have really spent a lot of time figuring this out, to understand all the possibilities, because there were a lot of possibilities. And of course, we encountered one. We have to be careful and watchful, and it's easy to make a few mistakes because these codes are voluminous, and they're all around us. They're everywhere. Everything that we do is governed by the rule of law. Sometimes there's so many laws that it's hard to follow them all. But the point of it is, is that in this case, we have to follow the rule of law. The other thing I wanted to mention, for sure, is that, yes, we've gotten some help from California Association of Realtors and from National Association of Realtors.
Okay. Thank you. That's your two minutes. Thank you.
I have to say one thing.
Next speaker. No, I'm sorry. Two minutes.
I'm going to say it anyway. The Rent Stabilization Board is going to cost $5 million.
Very much.
And that is...
Okay. Thank you. We have our next speaker. Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Robert Kevoros.
Okay. We have another speaker.
My name is Robert Kevoros, and I am a supporter of rent control because I think Santa Cruz needs to rein in rents, keep people in their homes, and create a fairer, more equitable, and also more stable community. I think this measure will do that. I, as a tenant, take the crisis of housing in this community very seriously, and I take the prospect of rent control very seriously. I also take the democratic process very seriously. For that reason, I was inclined to go try to find out what the requirements for having this election were, what the requirements were for getting a statement in on time. And I think when I hear other people who were unable to get a statement in on time say that they think it's very important that people have the information to make an informed decision, you would think that importance would be reflected in their conduct of actually trying to find out what they needed to do. But to my mind, the actions of the opposition, even in this chamber tonight, speak to not a preference for equity or equality, but a preference for essentially bullying and trying to do whatever it takes to get their way. I hear landlords up here essentially trying to blackmail the city by saying they'll evict their tenants if rent control passes. I hear an implicit threat of a lawsuit from a law firm where the mayor is an attorney. I hear $400,000 in outside money from state and national organizations coming to influence this election. And to me, this just shows that democracy is really not what the other side's about. Democracy means doing what it takes to make sure that everyone has a level playing field. And I think everyone did have a level playing field. The other side dropped the ball, but I think they have to face the consequences now.
Hi. Thank you for putting this on the agenda tonight. I had a prepared speech, but honestly, I felt that it was a little too off-topic. And what I'd really like to say to you is that this seems like an issue of legalities to me. And I don't know whether or not you'll be constrained by those legalities, but if you do have some kind of discretion in your decision, what I'm hoping for is that there can truly be that community dialogue about this measure, so that people understand the things that are good about it and the things that are challenges. We are ADU owners. That means that in order to afford to live on our property, we share it with someone. We're certainly not a wealthy landlord. Rather, we have a fantastic tenant who we really enjoy living next to, but we are struggling like so many people are struggling. It's not... It's too simplistic to call landlords the villains and to characterize them as greedy. That's really unfair to a wide swath of people. I think that when you look at the big money that can come in with an issue like this, that can still happen, and it can still mean that this is wrong for Santa Cruz. That's not... That's a separate issue. You can have compassion for people and still be opposed to this. You can look at it and say, "I'm for some kind of a measure that bases assistance on need, not based on whether or not somebody's lucky enough to be in an apartment when rent control is passed." I mean, the reality is that I'd like to help the very most needy members of our society. And if that is mainly tenants, great. I'd like to help them. But I don't think that this is the best way that we can go about it. And so I think it's important to let people know the pros and the cons. And if rent control is right for Santa Cruz, it should stand on its own merits. You should be able to talk about the cons. You should be able to talk about the fact that it's hard to evict people who are difficult. That shouldn't be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, Lisa Casby here. I've spent the last 22 years trying to understand our system, especially one of the things that I've been working to do is understand how the system works for poor people. In the process, I became very poor, and then I had to witness a whole lot of unfairness. There was the day that the people at the EBT Building over there in Emelie tried to rip me off of my fair hearing. Unfortunately, I knew the rules, and I protested, and I let them know that I was going to make a big stink about it. So they made sure to get me my fair hearing after a month. My whole summer was ruined, and I went through a lot of personal hardship. But that hardship is nothing like what a lot of homeless people are going through. They have to crouch behind bushes to go to the bathroom. A lot of these people have serious mental illnesses. Where were the caring landlords? How many times did they come out and talk about our lack of housing and talk about the supply that needs to be built in this city? How much did they care to address the escalating rents? So I just want to say is that politics is a game, okay? And my comments are mainly for the honest, hard-working activists that I really admire that are in this room. I admire them so much because I'm getting old, but they're young. And I want to have... Instead of these narrow conversations where all the wealthy people behind y'all, except for a few, that we can get into office by hard work, okay? I want them to prevail. I want our conversations to become broader. I want our understanding of how money is taking over free speech in this country, how fascists have infiltrated our bus company, and we have a guy who has absolutely disdain for people with hardships who can barely walk, let alone catch the bus. So I'll tell you what I want to see. I want to see them rise up when the vote I so expect out of y'all, except for Sandy, to be the usual one where you kowtow to the rich.
Okay. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Michael. People have talked a lot about fairness, and I used to think that federal and statewide elections in states like California could never be fair because big money would come in. And I somehow had the naive idea that small cities like Santa Cruz were different, and I know that's not true, especially when a measure like this, which aligns so much with class, is involved. You've heard about the big money. Another thing that always comes up with public comment is, it's a little like voting. People come up here, and the number of people that support one thing somehow sways, maybe sways, the council or ends up in the Sentinel the next day. Why aren't there more people here supporting the measure, arguing that you should follow the original guidelines because they're renters, they're working extra jobs, and they're afraid of retaliation? I know people in the campaign for rent control who do not want to show their face or give their name because they're afraid of retaliation if the measure doesn't pass. I'll just add one other thing besides that and the big money, and that is that there is a whole community of people in Santa Cruz that are going to benefit from rent control, but that can't vote on this at all, the thousands of immigrants and non-citizens that are being organized by Anastina Saldana. And so there's no way this is going to be fair. This is inherently and overwhelmingly unfair in so many ways. The best you can do is help slightly that process by going along with the original rule, the original date, just a little gesture in the direction of fairness. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Neil Langholdz. Everyone makes mistakes. Mistakes are normal. Mistakes are normal and understandable. In this case, a mistake deviating from the normal election schedules should be fixed. This is a consolidated election. There is plenty of time to submit information before the voter handbook printing deadline required by the state election law. The city should not deviate from the normal election schedules and give everyone adequate time and a fair and transparent election. Thank you.
Next speaker. Go ahead.
Hello, City Council. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, okay. Sorry. We have a speaker who's going to speak to us. You all had your time, so it's important for us to let her have her time. So I appreciate your respect and attention while she speaks. Go ahead.
Thank you, council members, for your patience and your respect of all of our community voices. I totally appreciate that. I love democracy. I love to see it in action. I would love to have an hour to talk about what a good and necessary ordinance this is. And I hope it will be turned into law because I think our city will be so much better with rent control. But that's not really what we're talking about tonight. If you look at the website, we're talking about whether this should be on the agenda tonight at all because it was put there by a mayor who has been recommended to recuse himself because of a conflict of interest. If you look at the website of the law firm for which David Terasas works, you'll see the words "real estate and business" over and over again. I have no idea what percent of their clients are landlords, wealthy homeowners, and real estate agents. But I would guess that it is a very large percent. The website itself proudly claims that, this is a quote from the website, "The firm provides aggressive representation in pursuing and protecting the client's financial and property interests." This is not a firm that fights for democracy of equal rights or for tenants' rights or for the little guy. It's a firm that primarily protects the property rights of the wealthy. The senior partner at the law firm where Mayor Terasas works is Mr. Brereton. He is David Terasas's boss. He is also the one that submitted the petition to extend the deadline. He is also the lawyer representing Santa Cruz Together, the major opponent to the campaign. Is it not possible that Mayor Terasas might be swayed in his consideration of issues related to rent control by his own bread-and-butter considerations? It's a financial conflict, and that's what makes a conflict of interest, according to our lawyers. His job and income depend on his boss and also the...
Okay, thank you very much.
I have one second.
No. I meant to... I know. There is equity of voice, and I really want to adhere to that. I appreciate that. Thank you. So you'll be given two minutes. Everybody will be given two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Schaller. I work at the Monterey Bay Central Labor Council AFL-CIO. We're the AFL-CIO for Monterey and Santa Cruz Counties, 80 unions, about 38,000 working families. We strongly support the rent control ordinance that is going to be brought to the voters this fall. We have been dismayed at the opposition that could not figure out how to follow deadlines and disappointed that when they came up with an argument and then submitted it and found out it was too late that they then tried to change the process. I would argue that they had their chance, and they had something to submit. If you do decide tonight that it would be fair for them to be able to submit an argument, I would hope that they would submit the original argument that they wrote before they saw our argument. If we're going to be doing this in a fair and equitable manner, then it should be done that way. If the point has been made that people should see both sides, then let's see both sides, not one side and then the other side that saw that side. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Stephen Karen, and we own Karen Properties. We've been on Mission Street for three decades. We follow with great interest the situation before us. It has taken the time and energy of so many people in this room. We have scores of properties that are managed responsibly, and we are gravely concerned with the rental situation in our community. The Voter Information Guide that's sent to all registered voters in advance of the election is a particularly important document. As stated in your staff's report, the deadlines for ballot arguments and rebuttals deviated from the city's practice of aligning its deadlines with the county. City staff acknowledges this action has created some confusion and potentially deprived the community of full and fair disclosure of the information. So we're encouraging you to do the responsible thing by reinstating the normal consolidated election timeline whereby campaigns are typically constrained. We also encourage you to allow both sides to present their positions so that the voters can make an informed decision. It is critical that the voters be well-informed on such an important initiative. As always, thank you for the work that you do on behalf of our city.
One second, Bonnie. And if anybody is interested in speaking and hasn't spoke already, please line up to my left, and we will make sure we are anticipating your public comment. Okay. Go ahead. Thank you.
I'm Abby Samuels. We want a fair, transparent, and democratic election process for both sides. Changing the deadline at this point is an advantage, allowing them to write their ballot argument having already seen the pro-argument. Terasas has a conflict of interest and cannot vote on its neutrality. The opposition to rent control missed a deadline to turn in their ballot argument against the measure. They and the city are blaming the city clerk for choosing a separate and earlier deadline for the city to turn in ballot arguments than the county, saying it was confusing. But it's perfectly valid, under California Elections Code, for the clerk to choose an earlier date. The county clerk's website says August 17 is a deadline for filing arguments against county ballot measures and says for city measures, "Contact the city clerk." The city attorney will submit an analysis of city measures on the deadline set by the city clerk. The city council, including the mayor, approved this earlier deadline at a public meeting on June 26. The city council is throwing its worker under the bus. The mayor, a week after writing an op-ed against rent control in the Sentinel, placed the issue of extending the deadline on the agenda for the special meeting. The mayor's law firm represents Santa Cruz Together, and their treasurer, also a lawyer at the law firm, sent in an argument for extending the deadline from which David Terasas's name was removed from the letterhead. This represents a clear conflict of interest or an apparent conflict of interest to the mayor's ability to vote on this matter neutrally. I have a suggestion. If you really want democracy, I would ask the city council to vote tonight to make it illegal for Santa Cruz Together to receive any funds from outside our city. I hope someone will make that motion. That would be a real triumph for democracy. Voting to bend the rules for big money is not democracy. It is a vote for big money, pure and simple. Thank you.
And I'll remind you, just to keep your comments to two minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jeb. I'm with the Campaign for Rent Control. And I just, very quick comment, and I want to draw attention to something that the city attorney said in his presentation that I think has been kind of like lost in all of this talk about democracy and these high ideals that our opponents seem to have just discovered, which is that the initial understanding of the law, as the city attorney understood it, as Gail Pellerin understood it, was that there was no violation of the law here, that things may have deviated a little bit from the norm, but that no law was violated. What happened in the interim, a group that has raised hundreds of thousands of dollars threatened the city with a lawsuit. This whole conversation is taking place under the threat of a lawsuit against the city. I don't know what democracy means in this context. Similarly, as Robert pointed out, there have been numerous threats to the voters of Santa Cruz, to renters in Santa Cruz. If this should pass, that people are going to massively sell off their homes and abandon Santa Cruz. I don't know what democracy means in this context either. So I just want us to kind of keep this in mind as you all are going to be voting on this, that this whole thing is not a democratic process. This whole thing is happening underneath many layers of threat. And that is an important thing to keep in mind as we go into the rest of this campaign. So, and we'll be telling the voters about that as we're knocking on thousands of doors.
Hi, my name is Viveka Jagadeesan. I am a tenant, a member of the Movement for Housing Justice, and I also ran Common Cause of UC Berkeley, which advocates for campaign finance reform. And yeah, I just want to submit to evidence three pieces of things that are in the public record that clearly state that this elections deadline was, in fact, the initially decided upon July 10 date. And I just, I keep hearing there was confusion about this issue, but it was very clearly on the city clerk's website. And I'm also hearing that the county website was confusing. The county website says clearly, like Abby pointed out, that the August 17 deadline refers to county ballot measures. And it says, "For city measures, contact the city clerk," really clearly suggesting the fact could be a different deadline. Second, the resolution that y'all approved, which I was at and a number of these fine people were at, on July 26, also says, "Primary arguments to be submitted to the city clerk, July 10." Third, what the city clerk put up on the website. So this date, July 10, was clearly publicly stated in several places available to the public, announced at a public meeting that many of these folks that are in Santa Cruz Together were literally at. I don't know how y'all missed it. But the relevant portion of the Elections Code that everyone is citing says nothing about requiring that this deadline is after 14 days. Like Jeb is saying, there was nothing wrong with the initial date that was chosen. It was unusual. It may have been a deviation from the norm, but in no way was it actually illegal. So I just, it's odd to me that...
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, I think I made my point.
Bye. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Harry Dong. Today, I'm hearing pros and cons regarding the extension of a deadline. The city attorney recommends extending the deadline, and the city clerk has admitted an error in setting the deadline. The council is here to decide whether or not voters will be able to read pros and cons on the ballot measure regarding rent control and just cause eviction. Let's let the voters hear pros and cons of rent control and just cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Bonnie. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have lived in Santa Cruz since 1972, when I bought a small, rundown house with two small cottages on it. For the entire lifetime, my entire adult lifetime, I have spent working on these houses, repairing them, maintaining them, and renting them. I am not a wealthy landlord. I also worked several part-time jobs all along the way and raised my daughter in Santa Cruz. I have taught at Cabrillo College in PC, and I have considered myself an integral part of this community, contributing to it for many, many years. And now I find myself feeling in jeopardy because of the rent control. I depend on the rents in my little cottages. I did not receive a big retirement. I'm not a wealthy person, and I really depend on that. And I think that it's very unfortunate that the people who are so pro the rent control don't realize that there are landlords who are not wealthy, who are not gougers. I had one tenant who rented her, who raised her own rent by a few hundred dollars because I was so under the market. And I think that there are a lot of people like myself who are... We're not with the California Association, or the Renters Association. I read that, and I think, those are not my people. My people are in Santa Cruz. But there I am. I cannot survive without my rental properties. So I will indeed sell them if, you know, this goes through. I do know some people who have already sold because they just can't deal with this. They can't face it. It's just over the top. Thank you.
Evening. Thanks for having us all. The extension of the deadline disadvantages no one. Everyone can submit arguments, which are not really secrets at this point. There's a 33-page ballot measure that lays it all out for the people that support it. There are many arguments that are published elsewhere for people that don't. This is about having information for the eyeballs of people that step into that voting booth, who may have, by some miracle, not seen or heard what this is about. And I'd like to ask again, as I did in the case of the impact assessment discussion, that the council vote in favor of more information rather than less. I think the deadline should be extended to conform with the rules for a consolidated election. Thank you.
Before we get started, how many more folks are interested in speaking to the council at this time? Okay, you can come on up and line up. Oh, Cynthia, you already spoke, so... That doesn't count, right? My understanding is if you speak once, you speak once.
That's right.
Okay. Sorry, you already had your time with your group, so we won't hear from you again. Okay, so you'll be the last speaker then. Brent, is that right? Oh, you're not speaking. She didn't speak with the group. Okay. Sorry. Okay, so you'll be our last speaker then. Go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pat. I was not going to speak, but I actually had to ask somebody just now, is this a charter amendment, or is this an ordinance? Tonight, I have heard both phrases being spoken in front of this council. And to my way of thinking, there is a lot of confusion about this ballot measure. So I would urge you to get as much information out to the community and to the voters as possible because clearly, we're just in this room of informed people. We're calling it two different things. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say one thing, and that is to quote Thomas Jefferson. "An informed citizenry is the bulwark of a democracy." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And you will be our last speaker.
Okay, so Lynn Renshaw, Santa Cruz Together. I want to set the record straight that we have not received any funds. Santa Cruz Together is not funded by the California Apartments or California Association of Realtors. You could notice that from our FPPC filings. This measure is about the future character of our city, and this measure is about everyone living in the city of Santa Cruz. It's not just about renters. Santa Cruz is environmentally beautiful, liberal, diverse, and attracts many fantastic people, making it hard to afford and find a place to live. The result is a painful affordable housing shortage. This measure will make the rental housing shortage worse. Voters deserve to understand both sides of the issue in a fair, democratic process. City staff should be supported in finding a way to fix their inadvertent error on the voter handbook deadlines. Everyone in Santa Cruz should learn about this proposed measure and its impacts. A likely permanent change to the city charter is very risky. Please learn more at santacruystogether.com. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. I want to say... Oh, excuse me. At this... No more disruptions, please. At this time, we have heard from the public. I thank you for coming and sharing your perspective. I will now return to council for deliberation and any further questions for staff. Before I do, I wanted to see if you... Mr. Candadi wanted to answer the legal question that was brought up by some of the folks who spoke to us today.
I heard two. So the easy one is that it's a charter amendment that's being proposed. With respect to the conflict of interest question, I have two thoughts about it. The first is I doubt that the existence of a conflict of interest would preclude the mayor from calling a special meeting on this item. But that's not what occurred here. It was a staff-initiated process that was done by polling council members as to their availability and as to whether or not they were amenable to having a discussion on the matter. And so the mayor did not call the meeting tonight, so there's not a conflict of interest question to resolve there.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the council?
Are we doing questions first?
Questions, comments? Okay.
So initially, in your first remarks, you said that... Well, I just want to make sure I understand clearly, that the deadline that was set was improper.
It was incorrect.
It was incorrect?
Yeah.
Okay.
May I ask a follow-up question? Because I'm not understanding what do we mean by incorrect? Because I'm hearing... So incorrect...
It was an error.
Not in accordance with the county timeline is different than incorrect.
That's right. So I explained it a little bit more detail beforehand. I'll just sort of revisit that discussion at this point. My initial read was that while the Elections Code, Section 9286A, didn't require that the deadline be set at 14 days, that it also didn't prohibit the city from setting it at 14 days. And so therefore, were the council to decide to extend the deadline, it would have to do so by amending the resolution. I've more carefully analyzed that and revisited that at fairly significant length, and am of the opinion at this point that the more persuasive argument is that when an election is consolidated, the deadlines are required to be set to coincide with the county elections officials' guidelines. And accordingly, if a legal challenge were filed for a writ of mandate to compel the city to accept arguments until those deadlines, it would likely, in my estimation, prevail. So... Does that... Does that make sense?
So if I may, what I'm hearing is that there was confusion generated on behalf of the city in setting an alternate date.
That's right.
And as a result, we were out of compliance with a legal standard that we would need to adhere to.
Arguably, if the Elections Code provision requires that all aspects of the election coincide with the statewide general election, then that would include ballot arguments.
I see. Okay. Do you have any further questions, councilmembers?
That was my one question for clarification.
I have one, just sort of more process question. How do we feel... And maybe this could be for you, Tony, or for you, Martine. How do we feel to learn from this experience and not have something like this happen again? What do you think we can put in place to avoid any future conflict like this before us again as a result of this experience?
Well, I mean, I think that, first of all, institutional memory is a very valuable thing, and this chapter in the history of the city will no doubt go down as a significant moment in the city's history. So this particular issue, I think, we will be crystal clear about in the future.
Great.
But I can also say fairly confidently that we will make other mistakes and be before you again at some point in the future, because this is a complicated business. We're dealing with very complex regulations and a very complicated legal landscape. And so as unfortunate as this situation is, mistakes happen.
Right.
If I can add to that, too. And one of the things that we definitely... We're not required to, but we can definitely do a better job at is to do additional, above and beyond, notifications, I think, as the city clerk administrator noted, as well as coordination and contact with the various groups that are involved in the elections process. So just having a more sort of progressive elections approach and working with the various sectors of the community that are involved in that, we would hope would also help in the process moving forward.
Okay. I appreciate that. Any other questions or comment from the council at this time?
We can't hear you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the council members at this time? Councilmember Brown?
I'm going to start with a disclaimer, because enough people have been asking me to do this, and I imagine will continue to. I'm a renter. I'm a rent control supporter. I live and write rent checks to rent control supporters. For anybody who's confused about that, for anybody who is concerned that I don't announce that, there it is. I want to ask a couple of rhetorical questions, so I've left it for the comment portion. We've heard a lot about fairness, and equity, and transparency, and democracy. And all of these, as with most decision-making processes, are subjective in the eye of the beholder. So I've been thinking a lot about, as people have spoken, the comments that we received, many of which I'm very articulate, very well-thought-out. In particular, comments from people asking us to not approve the extension were coming from... I mean, they were not auto-generated. They were very deliberate in the kinds of arguments they made. And I want to just say, I appreciate that. There are a lot of activists who put a lot of time and energy into a grassroots campaign. So my first question is, what is fair about, or democratic, about a grassroots campaign being forced to meet a very constricted deadline with very few resources to gather signatures in order that we could take a month-long recess? What's fair about that? What's fair about tenants in this town being made to be afraid of being evicted? I mean, this is happening with or without rent control, as somebody in the audience, a speaker, suggested. What's fair about tenants being afraid to speak up for fear of eviction? What's fair about their landlords telling them, if rent control passes, I'm going to sell this house and evict you? And while this is not an issue that we have control over at the local level, although I sure wish we did, what is fair about dollars counting as speech? I was actually going to ask you all to not... To save your clapping, because I'm going to say a few other things right now. I have no doubt that opponents of rent control of this ballot initiative will get the word out and have a very clear voice and a widespread voice in this community. We all understand a lot of that is coming from outside money, whether it's being funneled directly through Santa Cruz Together or just through the private consulting firms that make a lot of money off of those mailers. And they're going to be very good at messaging, and they're going to reach voters. So that message will get out with or without a ballot argument. Nevertheless, and despite the fact that my integrity has been impugned on multiple occasions for my taking a position on this issue as a public official, I do have respect for our responsibility as public servants in ensuring that the public process, the part of the process that we control, is equitable, legal, above board, et cetera. So I'm having a real hard time with this one. I'm just going to confess. But what I do know is that under no circumstances could I support an extension without some kind of remedy for the proponents, those who did their due diligence. I don't believe that it was a deadline that was really hard to miss. That is not why I would vote in favor of the extension. That is really just about the process overall, and the public process. The private process, all that money is going to move, no matter what we do here. So I'd only be able to support that if we can provide some remedy for the proponents of this campaign, the activists, the grassroots, people in this community who worked really hard, and they did meet the deadlines. They followed all the rules, whatever that may be. I've heard suggestions about the possibility of having some additional rebuttal, potentially being able to rewrite the initial statement, and/or if the opponent's statement was written without seeing the proponent's original statement, using that, and not giving them the opportunity to rewrite. I don't know if that's even possible to verify. So we need to... I mean, I'd like to have that conversation with my colleagues before I'm willing to cast my vote.
I'll comment. Thank you, Councilmember Brown. I appreciate your perspective and the words you shared, and I'm inclined to support what you've put out there on the floor. I'm not sure what that remedy would look like, so I think we need to definitely talk about that. There were incredibly articulate arguments made tonight, sound, reasoned, and really, it was... Certainly, it's a political issue. People have definitely argued that it's an ethical issue. And the way that I'm hearing it, it's a procedural decision that we have to make based on mistakes we made. So for me, that's really kind of where I'm going, and it sounds like that's where you are, too. So I think it would be a... I mean, I want to hear from our colleagues as well to figure out what a remedy would look like in order to support the extension based on the procedural error we made.
I appreciate that. I see you, Tony. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say that if the council were to direct the city clerk to accept ballot arguments until the August 17th deadline, then that would apply to both pro and con arguments. And so the arguments in favor would... Or those who crafted the arguments in favor would have an opportunity to polish theirs up, should they choose to do so. And at this point, since arguments in favor of and opposed have been submitted by both sides, I think there's some measure of a level playing field there. Although, I have to say that the arguments opposed were made with the availability of arguments in favor already having been submitted. I'm not sure how you go beyond that, because we're really just interpreting the Elections Code here. But at least both sides would have an opportunity to look at what has already been made public and to revise or refine their arguments, should they choose to do so.
Thank you. Comments? I'll just briefly say, I appreciate the comments mentioned by Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Chase. When I originally knew we were having a special election, I was furious, because I was so disappointed that we were going to have to remove the sugar, sweet, and beverage tax from the ballot for November, and I knew that was coming. When it was brought to my attention that this was also an item that had come up and that we had made a mistake at the city, I had originally thought it was on behalf of the other side of the campaign. So this, to me, wasn't necessarily about choosing a side. If we made a mistake, we should fix it. And so that's essentially what I heard from Councilmember Chase, as well as Councilmember Brown. And in terms of remedies, considering what we have available, I'm absolutely in favor of that, and happy to hear what other councilmembers have to say, or if there's interest in making a motion at this time.
To add to the conversation, tonight, we're really deciding a narrow issue. We're not deciding the validity or the virtuosity of anyone involved in this discussion. And so I think it's really important that folks know that what's before the council truly is limited to, do we support this extension? And I just really hope that we can have this conversation without ripping each other to shreds. I really, really do. I do not like how your integrity was questioned and the FPPC contacted when our own attorney, city attorney, had already determined that you did not have a conflict. And I didn't like the... Just, I guess, the meanness of the comments that were directed towards you. I didn't appreciate that either. And I haven't appreciated some of the mean comments also directed to our other fellow council member who's not here tonight, who chose to recuse himself. So I really hope that we can stick with the issue in front of us without going for the jugular and doing the ad hominem attacks. I know sometimes that's really hard. I know that. But if this were... If there were no questions involved about, or conflicts about, the date and the deadline, I would have no issue with just saying, you know what? The deadline happened. One group missed it, one didn't. Then, let's move on. But I do think there... One, I do think it was a very honest mistake. I do think there is confusion. I do think that the process wasn't 100% clear on the right date. And so I do want to move forward, and I think I'm on the side of extending it, because I think I don't see a disadvantage, really, to anyone by doing that. And that actually, that's not even what we're deciding, whether one person gets, or one side gets a disadvantage or the other. We're just deciding, should the state move? At least for me, was there confusion involved? And I think there was. So I would like to also think of maybe some ways that... I like what the city attorney suggested, that perhaps everyone involved gets to resubmit a new argument. And I think that absolutely needs to be part of this if we do go forward and extend that deadline.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council at this time? Is anyone prepared to make a motion at this time?
Do you have any ideas on a motion? You want to...
Once, I'd prefer not to make the motion. But I do think that certainly...
Let me just... This is a time for our council to deliberate. We had an opportunity to hear from the public, and we thank you for that. It's a very critical component of our process. But at this point, I appreciate it if you could not comment and let the council discuss and deliberate and make a decision at this point. Thank you. Go ahead.
So I think that the recommendation of the city attorney to reopen the process and allow both proponents and opponents of the measure submit their arguments and then have the opportunity to rebut based upon that, at least, level playing field, at least here.
Yeah. Well, I'll make a motion then. So motion...
Could I make a suggestion?
Yeah, please.
The motion would direct the city clerk to accept arguments in accordance with the deadlines established for county ballot measures by the county elections official.
I'll try to repeat that. Motion to direct the city clerk to accept arguments in favor of... In favor or in opposition in accordance with the county deadlines. Yeah?
I think that's...
Should I add anything else to that?
Dates would be good to have.
In accordance with the county deadlines, which are already established. Yeah. Which would allow for either the opponents or proponents to submit modifications up until the county deadlines that are posted. Yeah?
And just for clarification, that that would apply to both arguments and rebuttals.
Arguments and rebuttals.
So both supporters and opponents could submit arguments...
I think it's important to have that language in there as well.
...at the August 17th and August 24th deadlines.
Okay. I made that motion.
I will second that motion.
Did you get that, Bonnie?
Yep. Thank you. Okay. Are we prepared to vote, or are there any further comments?
No.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? No? Okay, that passes unanimously with Councilmember Brown, Norrie, and Councilmember Chase and myself. Okay. At this time, we will adjourn the meeting, and see you next week.